Okay, good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order the Gig Harbor City Council meeting of Monday, April 25th, 2022. The time is 5:33 PM. And I will turn it over to our city clerk for a roll call.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Barber?
Here.
Councilmember Denson?
Here.
Councilmember Henderson?
Here.
Councilmember Lichens?
Here.
Councilmember Rothenberg?
Here.
Councilmember Storset?
Here.
And Councilmember Woo?
Here.
We have all seven present in the coming board.
Okay, and would you all join us, stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Are there any changes to the agenda to my council? I need to get back, get my participants' screen back up. Okay, there we go. Okay, seeing none. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
I'm going to approve the consent agenda.
A second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Okay, motion passes, 7-0. Thank you, council. So, under the mayor's report this evening, I wanted to give a quick Harborview Stinson update, and thank you to Jeff for sending me the latest and greatest. All of the underground utility work has been completed. The base lift of asphalt has been placed for Stinson Avenue and one lane of Harborview Drive. And then upcoming work, concrete curb and gutter work in the roadway should be completed by the end of next week. A placement of concrete crosswalks will follow the concrete curb and gutter work, and the contractor is still on schedule to remove the detour before Memorial Day weekend. So that is great news, great, great news. So thank you so much to Jeff, and George, and Erin, and all of our staff, to our great contractor that's trying, that's getting this done. We're just, we're thrilled with the progress. And then I wanted to give a huge shout out to our first ever city dragon boat team. I was there all day Saturday and all day Sunday watching the races, and I was so proud to cheer on our city team. We had 18 people instead of 20, and they still came in eighth out of ninth. They were so awesome! So we will be sending pictures around. We just haven't had a chance to get all of those sent to Laura and Jenica, but we'll get all of those pictures sent out, and that will be in the gigabyte, and it'll be everywhere, and we'll let council get to see all those pictures. It was such a phenomenal, as I speak of the sun, I have to, I have to close my blinds, but the weather was perfect. It was, it was just ideal. It was so amazing to see our community come out like that in support on Saturday. All of our kiddos, we had some of the fastest kids in the nation that were, that were there in our city participating in those races. It was amazing. It was very emotional, very fun. It was freezing in the morning on Saturday, and then it warmed up in the afternoon, so we all thawed out. But it was awesome. I just encourage everybody to come out next year and make it just even bigger and better than it was this year. It was really exciting, really fun, and I'm just, I'm very proud of all of our staff that were in that boat, just rowing their hearts out. It was amazing. So congratulations to you guys. And I think that's it for my mayor's report, and I'll turn it over to our city administrator. Welcome to our, to the meeting tonight, Ms. Linda Kelly.
Thank you so much. Thank you so much, Mayor. So just two quick items. I wanted to, first of all, say thank you to everyone for the warm welcome that I've received here, especially from the staff. I really look forward to working with, more closely with everyone on staff, and I know that great times are ahead, and so thanks so much for this opportunity. And then secondly, just a reminder and an announcement that we're having an open house for the Gig Harbor Sports Complex on Saturday, May 7th, from 11:00 AM to 1:00 PM here at the Civic Center in the lobby of City Hall. And this is an informational open house to discuss the history and future of the sports complex project. Please come and learn about the community engagement plan and upcoming opportunities for community, public input, rather. It'll be a drop-in format with no formal presentation, and staff will be available at the open house to answer questions. Thank you.
Great. Thank you so much. Um, we are now going to open public comment on non-agenda items.
I have a question about the open house.
Okay.
Can, can all the council members go? Does it have to be declared some kind of city meeting if council members want to go to that?
Uh, Josh, you would know better than I on that. I think council members are invited to attend.
I was talking with the city attorney about this earlier, but because this is a city event, and we're discussing city business, there, we need to make sure that there is not a quorum of council present at any time. So, logistically, I'm not sure how we do that. We can try to schedule council member to attend at different times. But there's, there's problematic ways to address that, so. I don't know, the city attorney might have some other thoughts on that, but we need to ensure that there is not a quorum there at any time.
So maybe just to show of hands, how many council members were planning on attending at some point during that? Okay, so we do have 1, 2, 3, 5 at least. Okay, so maybe, Daniel, what do you suggest, maybe a stagger, a staggered schedule, or?
Yeah, frankly, with five, you're in a pretty good position to do kind of a first half, second half, you know, three in the first, two in the second, or vice versa, however you want to do it. You know, pre-COVID, we would have just noticed it as a public meeting with a location, invited the public. But with the governor's proclamation, we have to have minimum phone access, and for this format, it would be virtually impossible to accommodate the public through phone access. And so I'm sorry to slightly ran on the parade, but if you are able to split up into two groups, if it was seven, it'd have to be three groups, but with just the five, I think you could be fine, just identifying the segment that you want to go to and keep it at that.
So Josh, maybe we can send out an email in the morning to council, just having them reply back what, whether they prefer to come in the beginning of the open house or whether they'd be okay with either beginning or end, and we'll just kind of offline figure out, you know, that schedule. Does that work for everybody? Okay. All right, we'll do that. Just as a reminder, before I open it up for comment, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a body and not to any specific council member. All speakers shall be courteous in their language and deportment, and shall not engage in or discuss or comment on personalities or indulge in derogatory remarks or insinuations with regard to any council member, myself, or any member of the staff or of the public. Each speaker will have three minutes. We have a timer on the screen that will be counting down the three minutes. And if you have provided public comment via email before this meeting, that is your form of public comment that you've submitted and will not be allowed to give verbal public comment. We can only allow public comment in one form. And so if you have submitted a written public comment, then you will not be able to give a verbal public comment this evening. And if there's questions about that, the city clerk can answer those questions for you. Councilmember Henderson, you have a question real quick?
Mayor, sorry, my apologies. I had my hand up at the sports complex, open house. My assumption is, it's just an open house, just not going to be any presentation for those of us that want to sign up either AM or PM of that meeting. It's not like there's a presentation that if we come in the afternoon, it'll be, okay.
No, yeah, you can come at any time and receive the exact same information as from start to finish, yeah. Okay, so, Josh, I will open up the public comment. And I'm trying to remember where it is on here, where they can press, is it star nine to raise their hand, or?
Yeah, phone callers can press star nine to raise their hand if they want to make comments.
Okay, I see one caller ending in eight, seven, four. Callers, please state your name and address for the record, and then your three minutes will begin.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Markley, and ladies and gentlemen of the council. This is Thomas Wick. I'm on Hunt Street Northwest here in Gig Harbor. Two issues I wanted to bring forward to the council for thought and consideration, and hopefully for deliberation. I know you have a new city administrator. So this request would probably be going more directly to her. I still am waiting for the city of Gig Harbor to complete the request for public records that I submitted to the city on September 25th, 2020. As you all know, I've given the city multiple checks for thousands of dollars to pay for those records, and I continue to wait for those. So I would ask that the new leadership please provide those at the earliest opportunity. The other issue I had is Gig Harbor had, on their homepage, an interlocal agreement tab. And in there, there was an interlocal agreement, actually it was a settlement agreement between Pierce County and the city of Gig Harbor. I'll have to pull it up, my copy, but I believe it was dated 1994. And it was a document that was basically said that any development, stormwater reviews for any developments in the UGA, Pierce County would be responsible for the stormwater runoff review and for storm, stormwater specifically. So, anyway, that was dated 1990s, and it's subject to reviews. What I asked the council to maybe discuss and deliberate is, I brought up the issue that we don't have a UGA. We go straight from city of Gig Harbor proper to rural Pierce County with no UGA, which basically means there's no stormwater review, and that's why we ended up where we did. Anyway, it's not currently on, it was there, and right after I brought it forward to the Pierce County Council, now I see it's removed from the city of Gig Harbor's website. I would ask that the council please return that tab and that document back. And I would ask again that, I'm just not understanding why it wasn't amended when I've had countless communications with Pierce County and Gig Harbor in 2013, 14, 15, 16, 17, 18, 19, 2020, 2021, and 2022. And I'm just wondering why that specific agreement that addressed that very specific issue was not amended. So, thank you. I'll, I'll wrap it up. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. Does anyone else from the public wish to speak? Okay, we see a couple here. Josh, I'm not sure who raised their hand first. Did you catch that?
I have a caller ending in three, two, four.
Go ahead, caller ending in three, two, four. And please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, my name is Gee Hatcher, and I'm at 4340 Borgan Boulevard in Gig Harbor. In the context of potential impacts of the proposed sports complex, I'd like to address the consulting contract with BCRA that was recently approved by council. The contract is for Phase 1B and is professional and very specific on what tasks are included and what are not included. Traffic impact analysis. The contract includes only an evaluation of an existing unspecified TIA, which was not sports complex specific. It also includes a site trip generation analysis for Phase 1B, which will show negligible impact. This effort includes five subconsultant individuals spending a total of 26 hours and will be presented in draft form at the conclusion of 30% design, not before design. The final memorandum will be presented at 60% design when the project is essentially a fait accompli. BCRA assumes that the proposed site development is consistent with the existing unspecified TIA, which at this time must be out of date, and that it will not trigger any additional impact analysis. Any additional analysis would be an increase in scope and cost, which the city would hope not to incur, but would happen after design was well underway. Survey. Here, the contract includes boundary, topographic, above-ground utility, and tree surveys for nine parcels, not just 1B, which appears to be the area of the proposed completed master plan. This effort is valued at $130,000 or 21% of the total design budget for Phase 1B. It's interesting that the city is front-ending this work for the future, but not front-ending the potential traffic and environmental impacts on the neighborhood and surrounding area. In terms of the tree survey, it will include species and diameter, but not health, and it will be done in accordance with an unspecified city requirement. It will likely only cover major trees, as there are hundreds of young, smaller trees which make up the habitat. They will submit tree retention calculations at 60% design, again, when it's a fait accompli. In conclusion, I would hope that the city would be aware of the potential traffic and environmental impacts as they are with spending money on surveying for a future project that might turn out to be in the wrong place. Let's not put the cart before the horse. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your comment. And then I see Mary, is it Beert, B-E-E-R-T, last name?
I see, that's Marty Beert, and Marty submitted written comment. I don't know if that's who's on the line.
Okay, so then, Marty, we will, council has received your written comment, and so that will have to be sufficient for this comment, this public comment period for this meeting?
I understand that.
I'm, I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. My understanding was that it would be read by the clerk.
I'm, I'm so sorry, your phone is breaking up. I can't understand what you're saying.
I will try one more time. Can you hear me?
That's better, yes.
Thank you, and I'm sorry for the delay. It was my understanding by submitting to the clerk that the letter would be read at this time by the clerk. Did I misunderstand?
Um, the instructions on the bottom of the agenda state that the subject line must say "for public comment", and then in the body be asked to be read at the meeting.
And I did put, as you said, I did put that letter, so therefore I anticipated it would be read.
So Josh, is this the one that you were going to read out loud, or was there another, another? I forgot to ask you at the beginning, my apologies, if there was a written public comment submitted. Was this the one that you were planning on reading out loud?
We have one to read out loud, and that is from Mary Kozlusk.
Okay, so this, this one, then?
Look, I submitted my letter with the requirement, so what, my?
I'm so sorry, Marty, your phone is breaking up again. I can hear about every other word.
I will try one more time. I don't want to delay you. I sent the letter with requirement that it would be read. I sent it without, then I sent a second time with it, determined the need. Therefore, I anticipated it would be read, as is the other letter that you.
Okay. So Marty, if you would like to stay on the line, I can see if our city clerk might be able to locate that, and if it does fall under those requirements, then we will read that aloud as well.
Mayor, if you'd like, I can read that letter out loud. It doesn't have that request in, but that's council's prerogative if you'd like me to.
Yeah, I would say let's go ahead and read that out loud.
Okay. I see we've got one other hand raised, and then I can read the written comments if you'd like.
Yes. So the next name, Georgina Armstrong, and please also state your name and address for the record. And you can press, I believe it's star six to unmute yourself.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can.
Excellent. Thank you. Georgina Armstrong, 4340 Borgan Boulevard. Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Based on information on the city's website, the impacts from the sports complex for those who live here have not yet been studied. The petition to study all impacts brought in 200 signatures from a cross-section of the Gig Harbor community. The ratio of signatures to fly as distributed is 22%. The impacts from the sports complex for the citizens of Harvard Hill directly speak to the need for livability, which is the primary aim in the city's vision statement. We agree that children do need sports fields, and I've spent innumerable hours with my children and grandchildren at their sports events. The sole question here is impacts, and we would like to know what they are before it is too late. No other sports complex that I can think of is located in a residential community with only two access roads, one a thoroughfare that already has heavy traffic, and the other a dead-end street. Regional sports complexes draw a large number of participants. The Tacoma Metropolitan Market District, Park District, in planning an eight-field sports park, anticipated they would bring in 451,000 participants annually, which includes tournaments. The traffic that is generated by the sports complex will not stay in Harvard Hill. Borgan was congested long before the Harborview Roundabout detour. Traffic will go along the waterfront, just as residents of Harvard Hill do already, when we want to go to uptown to shop. And if the city is thinking the complex will bring an infusion of economic vitality to the waterfront and downtown areas, where are these people going to park? Other sports complexes have undergone extensive environmental impact studies before authorizing a design study. The city should do likewise for this complex. The public has a right to know which phase will create the highest impact for them, and the city needs to retain the flexibility to make changes in layout once all impacts are known. In architecture, form follows function. In building a sports complex, design should follow impacts. Entering into a $600,000 contract should be delayed until the impacts are known. Only then can you guarantee that the design is the right fit for our neighborhood and our city. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you so much for your comment. Are there any other callers that would like to provide public comment on a non-agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands raised. Josh, if you would like to go ahead and read the two public comments aloud that were submitted, the written public comment?
Yes. First comment is from Marty Beert. She writes, "With respectful concern, I address the April 25th agenda item related to the proposed Gig Harbor Sports Complex. Perhaps the intended sports complex was a worthy idea years ago, but many changes to Gig Harbor occurred since then. Our community has greatly changed since the intended sports complex was approved. I am an advocate for youth sports. I'm an advocate for environmental issues as well. In review, I've learned many areas for youth sports currently are plentiful. If sports complexes are to be added, the use of existing spaces on school properties would be efficient and effective land use. As a retired CIA educator, administrator, several districts there partnered with county, city businesses to place sports complexes on school acreage. Clovis Unified San Diego SD in Central Valley of California is a premier example of these partnerships, providing youth with the finest sports complexes. I recommend the Gig Harbor City research methods used in CUSD or other successes for youth complexes on school grounds. Priority for now, however, is current studies on the traffic impact in the area planned for the sports complex. The area's population, housing, businesses, and traffic has grown exponentially since the complex was planned years ago. Traffic studies, environmental impact studies, and cost-benefit analysis effects on our community are needed. Please recognize the many negative outcomes to Gig Harbor accompanying a forward movement of the intended sports complex. Tree removal, habitat infringement, traffic congestion, drainage through detention ponds, to mention a few. Trees add more than aesthetics. They diffuse, they diffuse sound and lighting. They provide wildlife habitat. They provide open air spaces while improving air quality. Drainage detention ponds and trails will be negatively impacted with the scope of the sports complex and related parking spaces. Studies are needed. Sports areas for youth are important. Areas for sports are now available, yet underused. There are other ways to achieve extensions of sports complexes if as needed. The current plan does not fit the current conditions in Gig Harbor. The idea may have fit years ago, but our community changed. Thus, the complex is not a fit as planned. As a concerned citizen, I respectfully request studies of the current environment and traffic be completed and analyzed. Our community deserves thorough, unbiased analysis. Respectfully, Margaret Beert, Marty Beert/Margaret Butt, registered voter 4340, Borgan Boulevard, number 1308. And the second comment that we will read comes from Mary Kozlusk. She writes, "Madam Mayor and City Councilmembers, this statement is for Mary Kozlusk, 4340, Borgan Boulevard, Department 1315, Gig Harbor, Washington. The trees were silent in 2014 except for the leaves, which only whispered. There were no people from the area who attended the Gig Harbor Council meeting in 2014 where a decision was made without thought of those who were destined to live in the plan and approved developments to be built in North Gig Harbor. Where were the people? There were no houses in Harvard Hill, no apartments in Bresser in 2014. Perrin's key was on the drawing board. No people, only trees, and they were not talking. And yet, the city records report massive public support in 2014 for clearcutting the silent trees and building a sports complex that would draw thousands of people from all over Puget Sound all year long. Massive support from soccer enthusiasts, from teams throughout Puget Sound wanting tournament-ready lighted fields for youth, teens, and adults. But did anyone think about the people soon to live in the brand-new developments being built in the area and the effect that such tournaments and the influx of teams and fans from outside Gig Harbor would have on residents? Not so much. Did the city of Gig Harbor conduct the required environmental impact study back in 2014? It's questionable. Even if the study was done, how could it predict the conditions we now face in 2022? We need an environmental impact study now before any clearcutting of trees. It's possible for soccer teams for all ages in the greater Gig Harbor area to enjoy the sport without building a massive complex to accommodate teams from the entire Puget Sound area."
Great, thank you, Josh. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak on a non-agenda item? Okay, I don't see any other hand, so we will close the public comment. Um, normally, we just move on, but you know, given comments from council during the week and the multiple comments that we have received regarding the topic of the sports complex, I wanted to ask if there is a desire of council to put this on a study session in the near future to kind of talk about this in more detail. We are going to have the open house, and we will have these other, other meetings for public input. However, I think there may be need for a meeting ahead of that, so if there's council support, I would, I would take your comments now to see if you would like to put this forward to a study session. Councilmember Woo?
Yes, thank you. That was going to be part of my comment this evening. I'd like to see this, I would like to see this on the agenda for the second study session in May. Yeah, I would like to see it there. I'm requesting that it be there. Thank you.
Okay. Councilmember Henderson?
Thank you, Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Woo, and I think that's good timing. We'll have the opportunity to have the open house on 7th, which may generate additional comments or concerns. One thing is, I'd like to maybe have you ask, or Linda, City Administrator Kelly, ask staff whether they could come up with sort of how they would intend to deal with the number of comments that we're actually getting on this. So at least give them a little heads up, saying, hey, there's a lot of stuff going on. What might be your plan to deal with this?
Are you wanting to ask out of staff right now, or after the meeting, you know, later this week?
Oh, it would be after this meeting, later this week.
Okay.
If, if this is going to be voted by us tonight to be as part of a study session, which I agree with, we'd like to hear from staff as to what they plan to do.
Okay, and I don't think we need an official vote. We can put it on the study session, no problem. I just, I thought that might be what council may want to do, so I'm glad to hear that it is. Councilmember Barber?
I, I would like to see a study session as well, and if we're going to-
And if we're going to be, if we're going to address comments that were made tonight and comments that have come in this week, I think that it's important that we also, since we're all new council members to when this happened, when this was discussed and approved before, I would ask that the study session include a history of what happened and how we got where we are today so that we have an understanding of the groups that are involved in the early process and the comments that came in at that time, as well as the comments that we're hearing today. I think history is just as important.
Yes, and the history is extensive. A lot of that will be discussed at the open house, the kind of the history where we are now, you know, and where we're going. But we can talk kind of offline, maybe through email, what sort of information council would like to have presented at that study session so that staff has plenty of time to prepare for that. Councilmember Rothenberg?
Yes, I think if we're going to do this in a study session and current council wants to hear the history, then we ought to invite the Parks Commission Chair as well as YMCA to fully educate current council on the history. My opinion.
Thank you. All right, I know that was a little unorthodox, but I wanted the callers, you know, online also to know that we are hearing you and we are taking your concerns seriously, and we do want to provide as much transparency and information as we can about this project. So thank you to all who came and commented. Thank you to those who submitted written comment, and we will move forward. So thank you, council, and we'll get more information to you about that study session and get some more feedback from you guys this week, later this week. So moving on to old business, we have our second reading and adoption of ordinance fourteen eighty-six, repealing the Gig Harbor Municipal Code two-point-five-one standing committees. And this report will be our city clerk, Josh Stecker.
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, we're back for a second reading of ordinance fourteen eighty-six. The primary function of this ordinance is to repeal chapter two-point-five-one, which provided for the standing committees of the city council. In addition to that action, it also revises several other sections of the municipal code that were referenced by the, that referenced the committees that were found in two-point-five-one. We held first reading of this ordinance at the last council meeting, and there were no revisions proposed to it. So if there are any clarifying questions, I'm happy to answer them. Otherwise, I think this is ready for council action.
Okay, any clarifying questions from council on this agenda item? Okay, seeing none, I will open it up for public comment. And again, you can press star nine to raise your hand, and then you can press star six to unmute yourself. Anyone wishing to speak on this item? Okay, not seeing any hands. So we will close the public comment and go to council deliberation and action. Any other comments from council? Okay, seeing none, then do we have a motion?
Motion to approve? Oh, I can raise my hand.
That's okay.
Linda, you can take it. I'll second you.
And the suggested motion is move to approve ordinance fourteen eighty-six.
Move to approve ordinance fourteen eighty-six?
Thank you, Councilmember Lakin.
I'll second that.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Okay, we will move on to new business item one, which is resolution twelve thirty-eight, revising the council guidelines and procedures. The suggested motion for this agenda item is moved to approve resolution twelve thirty-eight, and this report is also city clerk Josh Stecker.
Thank you again, Mayor. This resolution will adopt a revised set of council guidelines and procedures. We've met in three study sessions now and reviewed the draft proposal that's in front of you. I think we've encapsulated everything that council wanted to see in the revised version, so this one should be ready to approve. There's a number of additional actions attached to the resolution besides just adopting the procedures. We're repealing the old version of the procedures, which was resolution eleven ninety. We are repealing resolution eleven forty-two, which set the rules for how the advisory boards are appointed, because now that's going to be in the new council rules. We're revising resolution eleven eighty-six, which declared Indigenous Peoples' Day and Native American Heritage Month, just so that the reading of the land acknowledgement is consistent in council rules and in that resolution. And then there's a couple of administrative policies that we're repealing as well. There's the policy that was governing the Board and Candidate Review Committee, which no longer exists, and the policy for speakerphone attendance, which is now in the new council rules. So if there are any clarifying questions about the proposed council guidelines document that's in front of you, I'm happy to answer those.
Okay, any clarifying questions from council? Okay, seeing none, we will open up the public comment. Anyone from the attending this evening would like to speak on this agenda item? I see one caller ending in eight-seven-four, and you can press star six to unmute yourself, and please state your name and address for the record.
Yes, Mayor Markley, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Yeah, this is Thomas Wick again, Gig Harbor Hunt Street. I have a question. Mr. Stecker didn't actually disclose what the ordinance is. I believe it's, I mean, I looked at it, I think, a couple of days ago. I think it's the one we're talking about. But it's more of a question. I know you don't answer questions during public comment, but I'm asking that the council answer the question before they actually vote on this. So my question is, so under the prior rules, prior to resolution twelve thirty-eight, the Pierce County Council would actually vote to approve a final plat despite knowing there was no drainage to support the plat. And when I say there was no drainage, I mean, this is supported with photographs, documents, et cetera. So my question for you, Mayor Markley, and the current council is, would that same scenario play out with after resolution twelve thirty-eight is approved? And is the reason that this happened before is because there was a problem with the current resolution? So I was hoping that you might have some debate and some discussion about that. And that's the public comment. So thank you for taking that. Appreciate it. Bye.
Thank you, Mr. Wick. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Josh, but this resolution, I don't believe, applies to that particular instance. This is just, this is about council guidelines and procedures, correct?
Yeah, there's no correlation there that I can see.
Okay, so, Mr. Wick, if you're still on, please feel free to send the city administrator an email and ask that specific question again, and maybe we can answer that from staff after the meeting or this later this week. Thank you so much. Any other participants wish to comment on this agenda item? Okay, I'm not seeing any hands, so we will close the public comment, and we will go to council deliberation and action. Councilmember Barber?
Thank you, Mayor. As a lot of you know, I've been doing research into the social media portion of these guidelines and talking to colleagues in the area. And since that time, I've also been talking to people around the country who do social media for various elected officials and government entities. As a result of that discussion, which hasn't resulted in anything firm yet, and also in talking with city clerk Stecker, I would very much like to remove the social media guidelines portion, section six-point-five, from the guidelines so that we can continue working on them. And my goal is to come to some sort of a resolution that works better for us as well as for the city clerk and our council. So I would like to move to approve resolution twelve thirty-eight with the exception of section six-point-five.
So is that Councilmember Wook that seconded that? Okay. Okay. Any other council comments or deliberation? Okay, seeing none, so we have a motion and a second to approve resolution twelve thirty-eight with the, remind me of that section number again, Josh, the social media section?
Section six-point-five.
Six-point-five. Six-point-five. Do we need to vote on the original motion ahead of this? It wasn't an official amendment, correct, Daniel? So.
It's just one motion to approve it without that section, just one vote.
Great, that's what I thought. I wanted to make sure. Okay, so if there are no other comments or questions from council, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. And we will move on to our next item of business, which is the Prentice Avenue-Fenimore Street Half-Wit Roadway Improvements Final Design Professional Services Contract. The suggested motion for this item is to approve and authorize the mayor to execute a professional services contract with Parametrics, Inc., in an amount not to exceed four-hundred-and-four-thousand-nine-hundred-and-seventy-one dollars. And this report will be our Public Works Director, Jeff Langham.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, council. As the mayor noted, the agenda item before you tonight requests approval of a professional services contract for the design and permitting of the Prentice Avenue and Fenimore Street Half-Wit Frontage Improvements. The project was initiated as part of the twenty-twenty budget. It was originally a sidewalk project to provide pedestrian access between Harbor Ridge Middle School and Peacock Hill Avenue. The proposed professional service contract you have before you tonight would be the continuation of the preliminary design that was completed in December of twenty-twenty-one. I'm going to show you the results of that preliminary design here. Okay, hopefully you can see on the screen. I'm going to zoom in a little bit. There we go. Hopefully you can see that a little better. Someone need me to zoom in a little more? Okay. Okay, so this is the most recent layout that we have for the project. This area shaded here is Harbor Ridge Middle School. Here's Prentice Avenue. The gray shaded part is the sidewalk. It is on the uphill side of the street, and it goes all the way over to the corner of Fenimore and then crosses to the north side of Fenimore and down to Peacock Hill, and then creates a crosswalk also at Peacock Hill Avenue. So unfortunately, when the twenty-twenty-two budget amount was established back in July of twenty-twenty-one, obviously, the budget was significantly undervalued. And also, the preliminary design that you can see here was not completed, so we didn't have a scope of work fully established. The preliminary design, during preliminary design, we did discover some significant changes in project scope that needed to be completed when compared to the initial twenty-twenty scope. Design changes are captured in the scope of work that you have before you tonight. This includes shifting the roadway around this curve here downhill. That intent was to improve the safety of this curve and then to also save trees. As you can see, there's a few trees here. We're trying to minimize any impacts to trees, so we shifted the roadway, and what that caused was some fill of the embankment retaining wall and some guardrail that we're going to have to add. So that wasn't originally contemplated. We also have two crosswalks with rapid rectangular flashing beacons, and those were not originally contemplated. One last change that we've done to this during the preliminary design is we've looked and we've received comments and input to try and go after federal grants for this project. Safe routes to school, it's a washed-out program, but they use federal funds for that. And so in order to federalize this project, we need to increase our design effort. And so that increased design effort, we have the project become federalized, has again added to the total cost of the project. As noted in the council bill that you have before you tonight, the total project cost is currently estimated at one-point-seven million dollars. That's a pretty high cost per foot sidewalk, but we have a lot of different challenges to work with in this section of roadway. And then lastly, I just wanted to make sure council is aware that if approved tonight, the city, staff, and the consultant and Harbor Ridge Middle School, we've all teamed up together to have an open house for the public this Wednesday evening, the twenty-seventh, from five PM to six PM at the Harbor Ridge Middle School gym they have. It's their auxiliary gym or something, I think is what they call it now. So that's going to be occurring. With that, that's my presentation. Happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you, Jeff. Councilmember Wook?
Yes, Jeff, can you explain to me a little bit more what increased design means for the federal funding?
Sure. So there's the federal, when you take a project and you have it federalized, you need to take extra steps that we wouldn't have to otherwise take if it was locally funded or state-funded. That is often cultural resources. It's NEPA. It's also some of the standards that are required for the roadway and the surfacing. That all has increased scrutiny. Also, if we have to obtain any easements, we have to go through a whole different process for obtaining even easements when they're federalized. In the past, for non-federalized projects, we can just go out to the property owner and explain the benefit of the city coming through their property and the added value likely that they have by the city performing this project. And we are usually able to work with people to be able to show that benefit and value. But federal process requires us to go and acquire appraisers, which costs more money, and then oftentimes even requires us to pay for temporary construction easements.
So, and one last question, were there no state grants available for this? I get you said we're looking at safe streets to school, but that's really federal money. Is there no other? Is there not the one where you fill in? Well, there was not a sidewalk on Fenimore. That's the problem, isn't it?
That's a problem, and a lot of the TIB grants that we'd be looking at for this, it's sidewalk gaps. This intent is to put a half-wit frontage improvement. So sidewalks is one of the things that was the initial concept, just to put a sidewalk in. But past city councils have said no more sidewalk projects. You need to, your city need to build what developers build, which is half-wit frontage improvements. So that takes us out of the running of just doing a sidewalk project through TIB.
Thank you. Councilmember Denson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Langham. I just have a couple of questions. I'm trying to understand the evolution of this. So last year, we budgeted seventy-five thousand dollars for the design work, like all of the design work. And now we've discovered that we need another three-hundred-and-thirty-thousand dollars in design work?
Yes, that's actually, that's exactly right. Let me just say in, for council's knowledge, that the total design for the Thirty-Eighth Avenue sidewalk project, which is similar, it's not as long, or sorry, it was longer than this project. It was almost two thousand feet. This one's eleven hundred feet, was in the three-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range. So at initial budget discussions, the cost for design of this project was going to also be north of three-hundred-thousand dollars, but the final budget only allowed us to spend seventy-five thousand dollars.
Okay, wow, that seems a lot for design when the whole project is, I mean, it
Okay, wow, that seems a lot for for design when the whole project is, I mean, it also a lot, one point seven, but it just seems like a big percentage. Um, my my second question, and I think my last question is the federal funds. I love getting grants, but is it worth it? Is is it worth? I mean, I'm sure you've weighed the additional amount that's going to cost us to federalize it versus not taking the money and doing it your way.
Well, thi- this is about the threshold of cost wise for projects that the city would. The staff would suggest you look at federal grants. Um, anything lower than this, we would say no, it's it's not worth the additional effort. But this is approaching that threshold where we can say there is benefit to obtaining a federal grant.
Great. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Director Langham, I want to thank you for. Taking the trees into consideration on this project and saving as many as you could. I understand some will have to come down and. I believe the scope of work includes um, an arborist report or some sort of a tree report, um, which is good. I'm happy to hear that. Uh, next question is, I'm hoping since we are now opening this area up with sidewalks. Um, you know, I walk up and down Peacock Hill a lot and I know they're on the, I guess I'll call it the west side of Peacock. Where Prentice enters Peacock, there's really no sidewalk. There's a gutter paved, of course, but not a sidewalk. I'm hoping that we can. At some time prioritize the rest of. The Peacock Hill sidewalks, so the kids that are coming down, they're enjoying the. Pentis and Fenimore, excuse me, Fenimore when it enters into Peacock. Um, would do that. You've you've got the other side covered pretty well. Um, there are sidewalks all the way up in that area, but I'm hoping that. At some point, we can get a priority for this sidewalk as well, just to kind of connect it.
Yeah, and and you're right, that the the sidewalk along Peacock Hill Avenue in this area is on the east side. Um, and there really, there's a pay asphalt paved widened walkway that's not officially a sidewalk. And that's why that additional uh, crosswalk is been placed across. Peacock Hill Avenue with the rapid flashing beacons is to get people over to the established sidewalk. But yes, that. That definitely is something that uh, staff has looked at. It has been identified in our gig on the go active transportation plan. And look forward to hearing if how and when council wants to prioritize pedestrian and bicycle projects. To expand the bike lanes and sidewalks throughout the city.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Starset.
Thank you. Uh, Director Langham, I want to just say thank you to your work on this, uh, as well as the consultants you've been working with. I I live in this area for those of you might know that. Um, and it's been, it's been a concern for some time, especially around the safety piece of connecting our local businesses. And the middle school, um, I may see middle schoolers walking every day in the morning, same time as the the we have our highest traffic. So excited to see this come in as well as seeing the the guard rail placement. Uh, there have been cars that have gone over that embankment in the past. Going around the corner a little too fast. Um, and then also just on the work with, you know, I've heard it from various neighbors. Um, and you know, the consideration even on driveways and where they're located. And making some, you know, I think reasonable accommodations around those areas, so. Um, thank you, and I hope the council decides to move forward. Thank you.
Well, I'll just say Councilmember Store said that as far as the adjacent driveways and properties. I I have my staff should be talking to all property owners as we proceed about these impacts. And if if you're not seeing that, let me know, but it's my understanding that our staff will be or has been talking to uh, existing property owners about impacts to their driveways.
And they have. I've had received phone calls, uh, letters in the mail and a knock at the door, so they're on top of it. Thanks.
Awesome. Councilmember Lichten.
Yes, thank you, um, Mayor, and thank you, Jeff, also for all of your hard work. Just a quick question. Um, and I'm assuming the answer is yes, but just want to clarify that the sidewalks are ADA compliant.
Yes, they are.
Okay, terrific, because I know I'd hate to have to go back, so thank you.
You bet.
Okay, Councilmember Starset, oh.
Oh, never mind. I changed my mind. It's okay. I'm done.
Are you sure you can comment again? Okay, all right, any other clarifying questions from council? Okay, we will open up the public comment on this agenda item. Anyone from the audience wish to speak on this agenda item? I'm not seeing any hands. Okay, we'll close the public comment and then open it up for council deliberation and action. Councilmember Look.
Thank you. So a couple of years ago, I heard from the citizens who live in this area. That it was important and that it was a safety issue, so I did put this in the budget. So I'm happy to, I'm happy to see that the work is being done, that we're going out for a grant, that we're preparing for a grant. And so this evening I moved to approve and authorize the mayor. To execute a professional services contract with Parametrics Incorporated. And the amount not to exceed exceed four hundred and four thousand nine hundred and seventy one dollars.
I second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any other council comments or deliberation? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Director Langham, I'm assuming there's a reserve in there for change orders during that time that's built into the contract.
There is a management reserve. I can look it up on the uh, fee schedule, but I think it was fifteen thousand dollars in management reserve.
So let me, thanks.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay, seeing none, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Any abstain? Okay, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, council. And moving on to our staff report, we have our finance director, Dave Rodenbach.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Good evening, uh, members of the council and mayor. I'm pleased to present the first quarter financial report and the first quarter. Twenty twenty two budget Terry objectives report. It's in your packet and I'm here to answer any questions if you should have any.
Any questions for Mr. Rodenbach? Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Uh, Finance Director Rodenbach, thanks. I read through this and um, kind of got glazed over, but I. I think it's good to know as a bottom line, how are we doing with revenues versus expenditures first quarter? At a thirty thousand foot level, I I I know you can dig down and give me some pretty darn detailed stuff, but. Uh, it'd be good to know is that are we on track? Some things I saw were on track, some things weren't on track, but overall, again, from thirty thousand feet. Are we where we're supposed to be with revenues and expenditures?
Uh, it's a pretty fun report to present because we're about, we're about where we should be with revenues, about at twenty five percent. And doesn't mean we're going to finish that way. I mean, this is kind of a dicey year. But the good side of it is on on the revenue thing, we were ahead on expenditures. We're only eleven percent or ten percent of expenditures. So the gap is the gap to the good is widening. The fund balance is growing. Uh, should we hit any bumps in the road as the year goes on?
That is good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Barber.
Thank you. Uh, Dave, I guess my question is similar to Rogers. If you, if anything is keeping you awake at night. Aside from thinking that this might not come through as forecast, what should we be concerned about?
At at present, there's nothing. Uh, what I'm concerned about, to be honest, is where the economy is going to go, given all the uh. The the headwinds, if you will, that we're we're running into and I'm just now starting to. Reach for things and start trying to crystallize, but we really don't start seriously looking at where we're going until the end of June.
Okay.
Wait, it's it's really nice to get about a half a year of experience in to see where we're going to end this year. And then you have to remember, we're predicting next year and then the year after. In in this case, and so we've had pretty good success. And and so I was, I think I told uh, the city administrator. Uh, mid-July, I should be coming out with some forecast information and. Start to feel pretty good about where we're going.
Good, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions for Dave? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much, Dave, for this great work. Appreciate it.
My pleasure. Thank you.
And we will move on to council reports and council comments.
Oh, 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 wait, wait.
Yes, Councilmember Look.
First quarter budget report, are we doing that?
I think he wrapped them up into one, but did you?
Yes, this is part of that.
Oh, I have, I have a bunch of questions.
Okay.
Sorry, I thought it was going to be a separate item. All right, um, so I'll just go down through the list here. Um, so the K G P H radio station, are we not donating them to them anymore?
I can answer that like Councilmember Book.
Thanks, sir. Thanks, Chief.
Uh, yeah, so that program was uh, by R C W prohibited for a city our size. They discontinued that several years ago. That had to do with X uh, extra excise tax on our tabs, car tabs. That the city realized, but they changed the size of the cities that can use that money now, so that's not available.
Oh, oh, so it says program discontinued, so it shouldn't be in the budget then anymore.
Correct. We found that out after the bubble, uh, the budget was published, yes.
Okay, great. Thank you so much.
Be back.
Um, next item that I have. Is uh, the skate park security cameras.
Councilmember, would you mind telling us the the numbers of the pages so we can?
Oh, sorry, uh, page fifteen of forty four. And it's the first item at the top of page fifteen of forty four. And these are security cameras that are going to be in this in the skate park. And we do we not get a grant? Are we still going after that grant? Um, what is happening with that? Does anybody know?
Yeah, this was anticipated to be, the security cams were anticipated to be paid for through a grant. Uh, and right now. Um, we haven't yet. Uh, seen that grant. That was a grant application that was provided, I thought, through R M S A. Um, I don't know if uh, City Clerk Stecker recalls that, or maybe Chief B C does.
Yeah, it is our R M S A grant, I think comes out in, I want to say summer months is all I can recall.
Yeah.
So will we be applying for that grant?
Yes.
Yeah, if we see, when we see it come out, yes, well.
Because it was on the budget, I think, for this year, and we had the same issues with the grant. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay, then. Uh, Stinson and Harborview, we're not going to finish this project in the year twenty twenty two?
No, we will finish the project in twenty twenty two. Um, which page are you on again?
Oh, I'm sorry, uh, page twenty of forty four. Objective on track to be met in twenty twenty two, no?
Yeah, I'll have to check with the city engineer on that one. I think that should have been checked as a yes.
Okay. And let's see. And then how about the Harbor Master Lane Water Main Replacement? Uh, a page, um, twenty nine of forty four. Title item on the list. Objective on track to be met in twenty twenty two, no?
Um, yeah, that's correct. At this point, the intent was to be have it in-house designed and completed by operations crew. Um, since we still don't have any uh, progress made on our associate engineer who was going to complete the project. In fact, as you saw, we were taking a backward step. We're now losing our city engineer. Um, those in-house design projects, uh, we since we haven't started it yet, are all those are all going to be paused until we get more staff on board.
Is there anything else that's paused that we should know about right away?
Um, uh, there is, uh, we'll we'll go through it in detail when we have our next study session, but. Yeah, there's, I'm trying to remember off the top of my head, there was one other project that we're pausing.
Study session is fine.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay, and then uh, what we're doing on page thirty five of forty four. Third item down, so we're we're waiting for the Djerkovich Advanced Peer Mitigation. Until probably twenty twenty three, is that what that's about?
Well, I I checked this one as the on track to meet the budget in twenty twenty two because it's no longer a separate project. Since the council didn't authorize the contract. It was approved in the twenty twenty two budget, but council didn't authorize the contract, so. The advanced mitigation itself will not occur. It's going to be rolled into the commercial fishing home port and used strictly as mitigation for the construction of the project.
Okay, all right, so it probably shouldn't be a separate item, I guess.
Well, it, the only reason it is a separate item because it's identified as a separate item in the budget.
The budget, okay.
That's all.
Got it, got it, got it. And I think. That's it for me. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, Director Langham, I just got a couple of questions, actually, some may not even be. For you and then a general comment. Um, if you go to. Page eighteen of forty four. Um, the Pierce Transit, I don't think that's in your lane, and I'm not sure who's. Who's laying that's in, but uh, you know, the Pierce Trolley is pretty popular. Means of public transportation in the summertime months going all the way into September. Do we have a plan B um, on that? I, Director Langham, if that's not your lane, that's fine. I I get that.
It's true, it's Laura, Laura Pettit.
That's kind of what I was thinking of.
Yeah, she'll, she can send out some details about the conversations with Pierce Transit. And what's kind of happening with the Plan B. There is a Plan B.
Good, thank you.
And once that, I, once I think we're finalized with that, she'll send out notice to council on what that plan is.
Okay, outstanding. And then if we go to page twenty six of forty four. Uh, look at Stormwater Management and Site Development Manual Update. Director Langham, I think this is probably in your lane. Said the revision is required to be completed no later than August first twenty twenty two, but we're only about twenty five percent. We gonna make that date?
Well, I know Bree's working hard on it. Um, Bree has had a lot of conflicting priorities with. Uh, Department Ecology Report due by March thirty first of this year. I think she's now working, kicking it into overdrive and she's going to be start working on that. In depth, but yes, I think that she's going to be able to do that.
Okay, and then I think my, well, not I think, my uh, one general comment is. We need more people in the city staff. I I've seen a lot of zeros here and, you know, I'm looking at timelines and it's like. Goodness, we're not going to have, we're not going to meet most of this stuff and it's not a money issue, it's people. I I know the city's doing what it can and it's a tough time to get people. Um, and like I mentioned before, some of these things that are due soon that have zero percent completion. Are not nice to halves. They're kind of critical infrastructure items and if. We, because of lack of staff, have to push them off, it's only going to cost a lot more later on to get it done, so. Um, my, I know everybody's working hard on it and I appreciate that. We just have to keep the pressure on to get. Uh, Director Langham and company staff.
Yes, Councilmember Henderson, I'll just say that we did have our new H R analyst started today, Shannon Constantini, and so. She will be holding a meeting, I think, as soon as tomorrow with Director Langham to talk about uh, filling some of those vacancies.
Um, so let's hope we get some good applicants.
And yes, indeed.
I just wanted to go back to Councilmember Wu's comment on Stinson Harborview. Councilmember Wu, great eyes. That that Stinson Harborview uh, item that you saw was underneath the hospital benefit zone. Because it's partially funded by hospital. When you actually look at the street capital project description for that same project. It says it's on time and will be met by the end of twenty twenty two. I think it was an oversight, but we'll get that corrected for next time.
Thanks, Jeff.
Yeah.
Councilmember Rothenberg. You're muted.
I want to thank both Directors Langham and Rodenbach for putting all this together. Uh, this format is is really good. Uh, this has helped us. We've only had this a couple of years. Uh, but it gives us and council an idea of every project that we have going on. And it really looks better this time than it has recently. I have one suggestion, though, and that is when things aren't going to be on track or not going to be on the budget for this particular year, there is in this format an area for notes. And if you could put in there why it is or why it is not, it would really help us keep from asking questions. And if we see the same thing come up again and again, like we did last year, when the reasons things weren't getting done was all staff, then we could see a trend. So putting putting the notes of why it's not working or going to get done would certainly be helpful. And again, thanks to both you guys. Very good job.
But City Clerk Stecker, is it true that the notes column had a different, or the notes section had a different anticipated reason for those there, or is that appropriate for staff to continue to put notes in front of there?
I think that is the purpose for the note section. It should explain why we're behind schedule or why we're under budget. The notes was never meant to be like a summary of the status of every project. It's just to just to fill the council in on where we're at if we're off track, I think.
Okay, absolutely. Wherever we check a note, we will include a note in there.
Thank you very much. Okay. Any other questions for Director Rodenbach regarding either of these two documents? Okay. Well, thank you to Dave and Jeff and Josh for answering questions. And now we will move on to council reports and council comments. Councilmember Look.
Yes, I attended two meetings last week. One was for the CACC, the Commercial Aviation Coordinating Commission. And as we know, this is the commission that has been tasked by the state to find a new place for an airport for to handle the oncoming and anticipated passengers that are going to be needing to fly in the future and also cargo. The, basically, this meeting was stated that what they're looking for for passenger and cargoes is nine thousand five hundred length, feet in length, and eleven thousand feet in length. And thankfully, I think that leaves Gig Harbor out of it at the moment. However, they didn't say that. And so we are still, I believe, under the gun for general aviation, thinking about needs for more aviation and to transfer passengers and the general field. That was not discussed at this meeting, but there will be another meeting in June. And so I will be, I'll be attending that as well. And last Thursday night, I attended the Pierce County Regional Council Meeting. That's one of my meetings that I attend on behalf of the City of Gig Harbor. And holy cow, what a meeting that was. So it was all about the Growth Management Act. And Pierce County has actually vested a project in Pierce County in the UGA, in Northern Pierce County in the UGA, and it is anticipated to have around a thousand units in the UGA. It obviously is inconsistent with the Growth Management Act. And when this was discussed, I was told by one of the Pierce County Council members that they would be sued if they did not go forward with this. And he did not give a background as to how this happened, but it certainly should concern all of us when Pierce County is is not following through with the Growth Management Act on their own. And so then we come down to cities and to core cities. And the core cities of Lakewood and Puyallup and Five, and also put in there University Place. These are three core cities that do not believe they should have to follow the growth management numbers, the target numbers. And that was a conversation as well as to why they don't and really what's going to happen. And what this means is if you do not have core cities that follow the Growth Management Act and follow the plan to meet their target numbers, when builders look to find out where they can build, if the core cities are not taking building, then they start to look around at close by smaller cities. And number one, that is inconsistent with the Growth Management Act. Number two, that increases sprawl, which is again inconsistent with the Growth Management Act. And it cannot be good for Gig Harbor. So anyway, Planning Commissioner, Plum Sore Community Development Director Knutson and myself are having a meeting with one of the Pierce County with Pierce County Council Member Ryan Mello later this week. And we hope to discuss this a little bit further. In the meantime, during the next four weeks before the next Pierce County Regional Council Meeting, there will be a group, I believe, of Pierce County Council Member Ryan Mello and some other folks that are going to be meeting with these core cities and trying to find a way that they will accept their growth target numbers. As we know, I believe, probably at the end of last year, Lakewood was only at seven percent of their growth target numbers for twenty thirty. And Puyallup is light in Tacoma. I have to give my hat off to Tacoma because Tacoma did bite the bullet, and they did increase, they did upzone, and they do not have single-family zoning in Tacoma any longer. So far, Lakewood is not willing to do that. They are not willing to upzone at this point in time. And so hopefully, their conversation can happen with them in the next three weeks. And Puyallup, on the importance of following the Growth Management Act, if they don't do it, I don't know why any of it should. So that's my my interesting meeting with Pierce County Regional Council. And I look forward to reporting more back to you after our June meeting. Thanks.
Thank you so much for attending these meetings on our behalf and reporting back. It's very, very helpful and informational, even if it's a little disappointing. Thank you for reporting back. Councilmember Barber.
So I attended my first Comaneros Advisory Comaneros Airport Advisory Committee meeting earlier this month. And generally, things are moving along very smoothly at the airport. We did have a presentation from a gentleman who runs a company that has autonomous airplanes that are electric, and he was very aspirational in hoping that he could build a hub at the Narrows Airport. It was a very interesting discussion that was, didn't go a lot of places, but it was very interesting to hear what he had to say. But things are going very smoothly. The one big thing that was discussed is the Wings and Wheels event that has been happening for about the last fourteen years over the Fourth of July weekend will not be occurring this year. There seem to be a lot of reasons why that hasn't happened. A lot of them were not discussed at the meeting, so I'm still trying to figure all of that out. But there was a committee that was formed of members of the advisory committee to try to figure this out so that going forward, beginning in twenty twenty-three, there is a plan that is sustainable for an annual event at the airport. There also seemed to be some frustration or concern on the part of the members of the committee that they meet quarterly and they don't seem to accomplish a lot when they only have a quarterly meeting. So they formed some subcommittees to deal with budget, strategic planning, and also community relations. So I think it will be interesting to see what this committee does going forward. And it was certainly interesting and acronym-filled. So that's my report.
Thank you, Mary. Yes, I used to attend that meeting, and there are so many acronyms. I think I finally had them down right about the time when you took over.
My husband said he's going to make me a list because I've forgotten a lot of it since he retired.
Yes. Councilmember Henderson.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to shout out a kudo to our Community Development Director Katrina Knutson and her staff for getting, I know her eyes, but oh, boy, what you do. For getting that grant for the Urban Forest Management Plan. Thank you for moving out so fast. I'm really looking forward to discussing the details of what we are going to do once we get that money and start our UFMP, if I can use that acronym. But thank you very much for doing that and getting on it so quickly. So kudos for you. Thanks much.
Thank you. Councilmember Rothenberg.
Yes, I'd said a comment on Councilmember Woo's airport report. And I'm afraid we can't put too much stock in the fact that our runways aren't long enough as a reason they wouldn't choose us. There's a lot of reasons why they should not, and we don't want them. But if you'll recall, when they first came to us a couple of years ago, when Gig Harbor was first put on that list, they said, yeah, the runways are too short. However, we're the FAA, and we can make that runway go anywhere we want, when we want. So let's don't put too much stock in that. Let's concentrate on the other reasons that we need to stop it.
You bet.
Katrina Knutson.
Thank you, Mayor. I was on social media this weekend, and Councilmember Barber, I did see that Wings and Wheels, although not on Fourth of July, it will be August twenty-eighth for one day. Apparently, the county was able to work that out. So the event will happen this year for one day on August twenty-eighth.
Great.
That's good news. They were talking about possibly being able to do that, but didn't think they were going to make it happen. So that's good. I hadn't seen that.
That's great. It's such a great event. I'm happy to hear that they worked something out for that at least one day this year. All right, any other council reports or comments? Okay, seeing none. Announcement of upcoming meetings. We have included in the packet a list of our city meetings upcoming. And we also are now including the two-year strategic plan. So you can find those on our website attached to this packet. And if there's nothing else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn the council meeting.
Okay, all those in favor say aye. Okay, good evening, everyone. Meeting is adjourned.
See you guys later.
Have a good night.